...of the Amherst Elementary Village Board of Education's order by standing and clapping the flag. My pleasure, please.
To the flag, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can call the board, please.
Mr. Zappa?
Here.
Mrs. Gallus?
Here.
Mrs. Meier?
Here.
Mr. Yakobozie?
Here.
We would take a recommendation to adopt the agenda and any amendments as it is presented.
Motion in support by Mark. Is there any additional comments or concerns that need to be discussed? Hearing none, please call the board.
Mr. Yakobozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Mrs. Meier?
Aye.
Mrs. Gallus?
Aye.
Item five, good news reports.
Mr. Sayers?
Yes, thank you for giggling too. I took the pressure, I got some nervous students over here. See, I told you guys.
Have a good time.
Thank you, Board, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Mullner, Mrs. Chiafido, for letting me give my good news report. There's always things going on at high school. I mean, we have plays, athletics, concerts, always things going on. This time of year, we start looking at the master schedule for next year, and we start looking at decisions we want to make, and of course, we're taking our students into consideration, what type of pathways are they going to go down, how can we change things. It can be a very exciting time, and yet, it can also be a pretty nervous time. Some students know, I want to go to college, want to go to JBS, I want to, you know, do whatever I might want to do, but some, you know, it can be, boy, I got another year or two to figure this out, and it's getting real. So, you know, what we try to do, I think our number one job as educators, besides educating students, is getting as many pathways and giving as many options as we can to our students. And our hopes, you know, this year, we did a few things. Our hope is to listen to what the students are wanting and asking us for, and then putting it, making a new course, and putting a course registration on it, and seeing if they, if they want to get involved. And we, I'm happy to admit, with communication from our teachers and our school counselors, we are going to offer three new classes this year. We will have AP Art, Computers in 21st Century, and Walking for Fitness. So those are three new classes coming our way. We're really excited. I have a few students who are going to be talking about AP Art, and exactly what they want is just not coloring. I mean, these students, sometimes they're looking at maybe going into architecture, and they're an upper level art student already, and they want to go to the next level. We also, in January, we went to JBS, and this year, we took the entire sophomore class there. And a lot of students had never been there before, and the amount of credentials and class offerings and different types of programs there, three gentlemen I hear talk about, I think, eyes wide open. Wow, they were amazed at some of the things they had to offer. So it's, it's just another pathway for them. So, at this point, I want to turn it over to these three gentlemen. I have sophomores Jack Butcher, Greg Hinkle, and one of my neighbors, Lucas Johnson, who wasn't going to come, he was kind of on the fence at first, and then I talked to his dad, and his dad, you know, right down the street, said, oh, he'll be there. So, thank you, Lucas, for joining us. I'll turn it over.
My name is Lucas Johnson. I am currently a sophomore, and I plan to go to JBS for industrial electricity next year. It's a great opportunity and a great school. I think it was important to show all the students all the opportunities that are available, and that it was good that we went to the JBS and made it mandatory, because if we hadn't made it mandatory, I wouldn't have gone, and I would have missed out on all the great opportunities of that, that school.
My name is Jack Butcher. I am currently a sophomore at Moraine still. I recently intended, I recently had an opportunity to tour the JBS with my classmates, and then on that Sunday, I went to tour with my parents. I was able to visit classrooms and workstations of my choosing. At this time, I've adhered my choosings to HVAC and made services. HVAC has a lot of careers you can go into, just within itself. And made services would give me the opportunity to do a lot of jobs just around the house, just going out to do stuff, and hiring someone. And both, they both give a great starting point for a career in that field. And the JBS offers a lot of opportunities for any student who would have to attend.
I'm Greg Hinkle. I went to JBS the first time on tour. I went to welding and collision repair. Look forward to going to collision repair next year. A great time, very safe, and friendly environment.
Okay, and also, thank you, gentlemen. And two joiner, two juniors also joining us tonight, and they will be in the AP Art program next year, they're looking to pursue that, Jenna Blouse and Nadine Muck.
Hi, I'm Jenna, I'm a junior, and I've taken art ever since I was a little kid, and I've always had a passion for it. But as you get older, most adults push you into STEM field or service jobs, and never the arts. So, taking art here since freshman year, I was excited to hear that there would be an AP Studio Art program that was being enabled. This class will push its students to be the best artists they can be, and it's proven that art benefits student achievement, increases creativity, self-esteem, and critical thinking skills. The class itself will open more opportunities for college applications, and I'm thrilled that I will be under the best leaders, DeFranco, which one's there, and be one of the first ones to be taking a class, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Dean, I'm a junior here, and I'm really excited to have this art program next year. I really think it's going to open new doors for art students, especially scholarship-wise, because they're not always as successful as it would be for, like, an athlete, and so it's really showing us that the school is supporting arts program, and they want us to do that later on in life, and I really believe it's going to help have a better environment by being surrounded by students who aren't just taking the class, with the credit, and just giving a proud study for the grade, but are, like, really wanting to create things that they want to bring to the world and show different things off, and just really looking forward to doing that later on in life.
Thank you.
So again, as you can see, some new offerings, some different pathways. Like I said, our number one job is to give these children direction, and pretty soon, they're going to be in our workforce, and, you know, as you can see, I think our, I think the future's bright, and it's exciting. By the end of January or February, we will probably have all of the schedule requests in, and then we'll be able to decide when we take them and everything else, so it's, as I said, a pretty exciting time. Probably the, one of the most important things we do in high school is set them up for success in their classes, so, thank you. That's the end of my report.
The next part of the agenda is pursuing at the public, no one has signed up. The speakers, this evening, if you can proceed right on. So, treasuries reports will be next.
Good evening, Board, members of the audience. I wanted to present to you this evening the 2018 district profiles, which is data that has been, hi, I'm Cyde, Ohio Department of Education. If you recall, my second interview, I presented data profiles to an executive summary graph. And these, for the most part, are the same data points. I'm going to offline there for just a moment. This is really interesting stuff, it really is, but what the data really speaks to is that Amherst is a really well-known district, and fiscal prudence, you know, sprees all over the data, so, we'll get started here. So, what are the data profiles? The data profiles are 61 separate data elements collected on all of the public school districts in this state of Ohio. There's seven major categories, demographic data, personnel data, proxy evaluation and tax data, local tax effort data, expenditure data, revenue, and school district financial status data. The sources of the data are somewhat varied. The Ohio Department of Education collects and compiles the majority of this information from different systems that we use. The foundation funding file is one that is used predominantly in much of this data calculation, and what they're pulling from is the June number two foundation funding report. They collect information from, from, excuse me, the report card. On the report card, there's all types of demographic data, and of course, they're pulling the 2018 report card data. They're pulling information also from ENIS, Education Management Information System, that compiles data on both students and personnel. For instance, one of the personnel items that would be compiled here would be job titles or job position codes, and, you know, assistant superintendent would be compiled and pulled, and we would know then that that is part of administration, et cetera. Those are the types of things. Transportation, transportation filed, the T1 and T2 report, they're reporting on student ridership, they're reporting on how many square miles the district does, all that type of information. Then finally, the five-year forecast information is what's driving the expenditure data, and also how the expenditures are broken down into salaries, benefits, purchase services, et cetera. Then also, we have data compiled from the Ohio Department of Taxation, and then also Ohio County Auditor. In your folder that I gave you, in the very back tab, is all 61 data points for all of Moraine County, 14 school districts in Moraine County. The middle section is the PowerPoint presentation that you see on the screen. The top portion is the executive summary, which goes into a more in-depth explanation of what each of these 14 data elements mean. So, the, I, I need to mention that the first vertical bar of each of the bar graphs is the statewide average. So there's, you see, 15 data points, but the statewide average is there, and it's neat that it's right, you know, next to Amherst. So, for district year enrollment, this graphically represents the enrollment of the 14 districts in the state, in the county of Moraine. And there are two large districts, five medium districts, and seven small districts. We are the sixth largest with an enrollment of 3,610 students, statewide average is 2,568. Exhibit two is actually two data points in the same graph. On the left Y-axis is teacher average salary, and on the right Y-axis is a percentage, and that percentage represents the number of teachers, a percentage of teachers with 10-plus years of experience. This is really a meaningful graph when you put them together, because alone, they just don't, they don't mean as much. So, we do have the average highest salary for teachers in Moraine County, however, we also have the highest percentage of teachers with 10-plus years of experience, so there's a cause and effect there, a very direct correlation. In fact, for those people who really love math, the correlation coefficient is positively related 66% of the time, and it would be even greater if you took the outliers out. You'll notice that Moraine City, the average teacher salary exceeds the year's experience, you know, that's an anomaly, for the most part, in this graph. You can see that the blue line for the, the percentage of experience follows, for the most part, the average teacher salary. What does this mean? That nearly 80% of our teachers have been here 17, 18-plus years? Means that most of our teachers, 80% of them, have master in education. We rank highest in salaries, but that is obviously correlated to the teacher's vast experience. Our report card results show that this is money well spent, obviously. We've been able to do all of this without going to the ballot in a number of years, and raising less property taxes than several districts in Moraine County. The quality of experienced educators is where the district should be spending its money, and we are. The next graph is just a depiction, then, of the average annual salary of administrators in Moraine County as opposed to the statewide average. There, each district could specify in ENIS administrators differently, so this isn't always a perfect apples-to-apples comparison, but as you can see, we run on the inner side with average annual salaries. The number of students per administrator, this is definitely interesting, the graph illustrates that 200, at 249 students per administrator, we have the largest number of students per administrator in the county, and we borrowed from the state average. The state average is, I believe, 138 and a half. It just illustrates the operation here in the district. The administration cost per pupil, this is not just salary benefits, it's salary benefits, it's administrative supplies, materials, it could be administrative purchase services, et cetera, et cetera. But when you look at the statewide average, right next to Amherst, the statewide average is $1,601 per student, and we're coming in just over $1,000 for student administration expenditure highs. Next, we're going to move more toward a revenue look. The assessed valuation per student, if you recall, assessed valuation is the total number, the valuation for our typical subdivision, and then you divide that per student, and we come in at about $145,000 per student. The statewide average is just around $150,000 per student. We have only three, Moraine, just, Moraine County districts have a lower assessed valuation for students than Amherst, and again, as a point of reference, the, the state average is considerably higher. So, exhibit seven is the percentage of residential and agricultural properties as a percent of the total assessed valuation. What this gives you an idea of is how residential is our community, or how commercialized is our community. And at 80%, we obviously have a very high percentage of residential and agricultural property in the county. We are a more residential community, we don't have any really, really large businesses that would inflate our assessed valuation in the district. This next exhibit, then, is the revenue raised by one mil of property tax. And this graph illustrates the revenue for each student with only one mil of tax levy. Columbia collects 257 per student, and Amherst collects about 145 per pupil, just as, as an idea. The statewide average is 155 per student, and we fall below that, again. The next is the ODE funding received per student. The statewide average is 4,000 per pupil, and we receive over 3,000 per pupil. You see a great deal of difference in this, this graph here, clearly, again, as an outlier, Avon Lake and Avon Local are much, much lower than Amherst and the statewide average. The total revenue per student, then, this is all sorts of revenue. It's local revenue, it's the state funding revenue, it's federal revenue, and the statewide average, I'm sorry. The statewide average is $14,223 total revenue per student, and we fall much, much lower than that. You'll notice, again, there are a couple of outliers, Moraine City schools, Overland in Moraine City, that may be due to federal competitive and, the formula grants, that would be largely due to disadvantagement. District average income, then, is, this is for 2016, it takes some time to process this data. The average income for 2016, then, we rank, Amherst ranks eighth in the 14 districts in the county. All the two county districts fall below the statewide average of $77,989. Our average income in Amherst falls just below $60,000. Now, we'll switch to expenditures. Expenditures per pupil, then, are all of the expenditures divided by our EBM at the end of the school year. The statewide average is nearly $12,000 total expenditures per student. We fall $90,456. You'll see some other outliers, Overland and Moraine City both have very high expenditures per, per student as well. Again, these are, these are outliers, for the most part, all of them fall within a couple of standards, maybe. So, this is, the final charts, our two exploded pie charts, exhibit 13 and 14, they're on separate pages in your pocket, but on the screen, I have them next to each other. And there's no right or wrong answer here on this, other than we conform to the state averages. There's nothing that speaks to us having an oddity in maybe purchase services or something like that. Our average, our expenditures last year on salaries were 57.4%, and the statewide average for salaries spent is 53.3%. Benefits was 21.8, statewide benefits 21.1%, so it just shows that we're in line with the state averages in, in some districts where they have incredibly high salary benefits expenditure. You, you would see that very clearly when you, when we put the exploded pie chart side by side. So, so, the ODE profiles just provide a wealth of information, they're used statewide, both for entomoles for comparison purposes, it tells a story about the district, and Amherst Executive Village School District offers expanded opportunities, augmented classroom opportunities, resources, programs, and our residents enjoying one of the lowest property tax rates in Moraine County. And through wide oversight, improved use of financial resources, and have strong professional talent, Amherst has provided this high-quality education at an excellent value for our community. This could not be achieved without strength, and bears to mention, strong leadership, strong professional, strong professional staff, strong support staff, and strong community support and involvement make this possible. All right? So, do you guys have any questions about this? It's a lot of information, I'm grateful that I didn't cover all 61 data points. Thank you. Can you please piggyback on anything that I?
Yes, thank you very much, Amy. I wanted to thank Amy for putting all this together, as a, as a poor math teacher. I really enjoy looking at all these numbers and graphs and those kinds of things, but as, as I was looking at the various exhibits and graphs there, there were a couple of things that just kind of jumped off the screen at me, and the, the whole efficiency, the idea of efficiency. I think in one graph was administratively, we spend about $1,000 per student, and the state average is about $1,600 per student, and that's why it's been something that we pride ourselves on here in Amherst, is operating very lean administratively, so that the resources can go to the classrooms and to our students and expanding opportunities for them. And even the total expenditures per student were at roughly 9,400, which is $2,500 per student, below the state average. The state average, I think, was 11,900, almost 12,000. And so, these are very good numbers from an efficiency standpoint, but they're also happening at a time where we're expanding our program, so not only have we been able to continue to operate efficiently, efficiently as a district over these last several years, but at the same time, we've done things like renovate this space, same thing with the CLC at the junior high, we've added all-day, everyday kindergarten, we've added electives at the high school, we've added orchestra at the junior high and high schools, so we're moving our educational program forward and expanding opportunities for students, but at the same time, finding a way to do that in a very efficient manner, which I think the, the numbers kind of bear that out. So, you know, this whole idea of, you know, we talk a lot about it at the board, at the board office about return on investment. We want to make sure that, you know, we're providing a good return on investment, and I think the numbers show that. So again, you know, thank you very much, Amy, and good, good stuff. Well done, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to put 47, another one?
No. Ron would like to do that in a private session.
Any other questions for Amy? Executive summary that she provided for us this evening. Again, very well done, and I think it has a lot of vital information that is crucial to the citizens of this district to know where we stand and the opportunities that exist here. With that, we would take the recommendations.
Item 8A, board minutes for the January 14th Board Meeting.
We'll entertain a motion for item 8A. Got a motion in a second? Today, discussion, hearing none, call the board.
Mrs. Gallus?
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Meier?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Meier?
Aye. Item nine on tonight's agenda would be superintendent's report, Mr. Sayers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Three items as part of my report this evening. First of all, just wanted to give a quick update, transition team, Mrs. Meier is a part of that team, and serves on that team, and we met last week at our first meeting, and we had administrators, we had teachers there, we had Sarah Kussbell, as a parent, was there, and a great, great meeting. We covered a lot of ground, talked about a number of things, details that need to be worked, worked out in the coming months as we prepare for the transition into the new elementary school next year, so that'd be.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Stay.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Items three, excuse me, A, C, D, E, and F are all pretty regular items. The one-fourteenth, the January fourteenth, regular board meeting, minutes need to be approved, the January financial report need to be approved, a supplemental appropriation for the Honors Society here, still needs to be approved, and for the board to acknowledge donations.
Your motion in a second. On item C, A, C through F, is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Item nine on tonight's agenda would be superintendent's report, Mr. Sayers.
Yes, thank you, Strangle. Three items as part of my report this evening. First of all, just wanted to give a quick update on transition team. Mrs. Snyder is a part of that team and serves on that team. And we met last week at our first meeting, and we had administrators, we had teachers there, we had Sarah Kussbell, his parent was there, and a great, great meeting. We covered a lot around, talked about a number of things, details that need to be worked out in the coming months as we prepare for the transition into the new elementary school next year. So that meeting went very, very well. Just a reminder that we are going to be meeting with the parents of next year's third graders, having listening sessions for those parents to provide some input into the whole transition process. These were originally scheduled for a couple of weeks ago, but we rescheduled due to the sub-zero temperature weather that we had. So those will occur this week. The first one is tomorrow at 5:00 PM right here in the CLC, and then also on Wednesday at 7:00 PM right here in the CLC. So those will be good meetings, and we look forward to getting that input from parents and having good conversation as far as this transition and the work that we need to do over the next several months. Speaking of the transition team, one of the items that we discussed was this idea of high school busing. And certainly pleased to report that an agenda item this evening is a recommendation pending your approval that we implement high school busing effective with the 2019, 2020 school year. And over the last several weeks, we've had a conversation with our administrators, we've talked with our, obviously our transportation department was the topic of the conversation at our transition team meeting. And due to the consolidation of buildings and being at four buildings where we currently are and will be moving forward, we have determined that we are able to implement high school busing at very minimal additional cost. Some of you may remember that when we last did high school busing, I think, because I did my research, I think it was 2006, 2005, six, may have been the last year that we had high school busing. And at that time, we were operating as a district, six school buildings, and there were three bus runs. And of course, since then, we've consolidated, we're down to four buildings, and we have two bus runs currently. And Kathy Gale has determined that we can accommodate high schoolers on these two existing buses. We won't have to have runs. At the very most, what we may have to do is take a couple of part-time drivers and move them to full-time status, but at very, very minimal additional cost. And certainly, this is a great service that we're excited to provide, again, pending your approval, to students and their families. Every year in August, we get phone calls, especially from freshmen and sophomore parents about the high school busing topic. And is there a chance that we can bring that back is the question that we get. So it's just a great, great to be able to provide this opportunity. We've heard from the high school that they believe it would be a big help in terms of cutting back tardiness, students tardying at school because of the transportation issue, and just improve overall attendance. So just a lot of positive things we believe will come about because of this reinstitution of high school busing. So again, certainly a pleasure to be able to include that on the evening's agenda. And then the last thing I just wanted to provide a quick update on is the logo. You probably remember, it's been five years since we approved the new Amherst logo. We had a committee, it seems like just yesterday, but it's been five years ago, and adopted the new Amherst comment logo. And actually, that logo, the trademark license is up for renewal, and we need to renew that by June. And one of the things that has come up over these last four or five years is that we've had some businesses utilize the logo really without the permission of the school district. And we didn't take any action initially to grant approval to businesses to utilize the logo verbally. We gave the okay to two businesses here in the district to kind of utilize the logo and get that logo out there. So we've run into some things over these last four or five years with, again, who can use the logo, who can't use the logo. And working with legal counsel, one of the things that's been suggested is that actually as a board, that we would consider taking action to identify the business or businesses, as many as we would want to, to grant permission, formal permission to utilize the school logo. The other, the other thing that's been suggested to us by our legal counsel and others that we've talked to is that maybe we need to explore the opportunity to enter into some type of agreement, again, with a business or businesses, that would actually return some revenue to the school district. Again, we've had the kind of precedent, I guess, in the past, if you will, with the naming rights agreement, where we've been able to provide, you know, revenue back to the school district, you know, in return for some advertising with Mercy Health, the naming of the stadium and those types of things. So one of the things that we want to do is explore this idea of developing a partnership or some type of agreement with one or more businesses to maybe generate some revenue that could come back to our students, or whatever organizations, booster groups, what have you. So just wanted the board to be aware that we're going to be working on that process in the next several months. Amy and I are going to be working with Mr. Teller and Mr. Pohl. We're hoping to set up a meeting, our first meeting before the end of the month, but we want to take our time as we work through this process. But certainly, we want to have a recommendation to present to the board prior to June, which is when that license renewal, you know, is due on the trailer. So it just seems like an ideal time to take a step back, review the logo, how it's being used, and maybe how we can structure something that would be a benefit ultimately to our students. And that completes my report. Yes, we actually, that was one of the things that actually came up, is the attorney that we originally worked with is no longer in the firm. He went and moved out to another firm, so John kind of refers to another attorney who does this kind of work. His name is actually Gary Strudnawski, and ironically, is an Amherst steel graduate. So, which is just great, the way that kind of worked out, and he's part of John Britton's firm, and he's helping us with this process, and has already given us some information that has proved very helpful as we move.
Any questions or? Questions or comments for Steve? Great. Thanks. Moving on to the administrative committee reports. Mr. Wimmer?
I'd like to reinforce what Mr. Teller mentioned this evening. High school and junior high have put up the, of course, guides to their students, so students are making decisions. And by the end of the month, they should be able to have all those back, and we'll be running simulations to try to figure out the most efficient schedule to get everyone in right classes and bounds class sizes and so on. So they're on a great timeline right now. It's also nice that, as Mr. Teller mentioned tonight, that we continue to add options and new courses for kids. You know, my daughter's going into seventh grade, so her kind of information came home, and my wife was helping her with it, and, you know, my wife's looking through the different things, and I was excited about all these different things she could choose, and my wife goes, "Where did all these new courses come from?" I said, "Well, to Mr. Gibson, and then the teaching staff at the junior high." So same thing there at the high school. What also was nice in the high school process was the guidance counselors met with all the students to really go over what options there were. And this year specifically, it's nice to see how things just kind of progress. I remember a couple of years ago, we implemented the SAT suite to make sure all our freshmen and sophomores in June were taking appropriate pre-SATs to kind of prepare themselves for college. Well, some of the data we got back with was AP potential. Who has AP potential to be successful in AP courses? Which, right now, is interesting because, you know, AP's kind of competing with college credit plus, right? Students are kind of having to pick one or the other direct path they want to go. So it was nice that some AP teacher had that information, were able to share with those kids, and say, "Look, coming back from the assessments that we've been giving, this says you have AP potential to take AP government, AP history, and so on." So it was nice to share that with the students. So kudos to the high school staff, the junior high staff, for, again, continuing to put all those pieces together, to share information and give options to the kids. Another fun thing I want to share, talking about options, is along with this space, which we implemented a couple of years ago, you know Amanda Sears, our technology integration specialist, has continued to do virtual field trips. Well, she compiled the data for us, I just wanted to share it with the board. They have completed, since she started doing that in the last few years, fifty-nine virtual field trips. They've traveled ninety-five thousand virtual miles, and virtually crossed zero to the district. But again, I mentioned this a couple of times before, they had a Holocaust survivor discussion, the penguin research I mentioned before, from Antarctica. That involved Football Hall of Fame, careers in sports, sea turtle hospital from Florida Keys, whale watching, Red Force, Eureka, California, I mean, Wild Bill from Wyoming, animal habitats in Tennessee, and it goes on and on and on. So it's just awesome that our students have those kind of opportunities. But again, it comes back to the board, superintendent, principals, teachers willing to continue to just do something new, do something different, make a change, not just, it's easy to complacent and just status quo, it's going well, but it's not always easy to kind of change all the time and update things. So congratulations to everyone, I think that's the cool stat I'm going to check.
Who's our board? Questions for Mike or comments? I would just say that I am pleased to hear the high school guidance counselors are meeting with every student in the high school. It's only taken us, how many years, Valerie? How many years, Ron? To get that back, because I think it's something that the majority of people on this board have always thought of, this might be from our own kids going through this system.
And I had to follow up on that. Mr. Teller is bringing a very personalized approach to this whole process, which is, as you mentioned, is very, very important. The other thing I wanted to highlight, just to reinforce, and Mr. Teller mentioned before, this idea of the entire sophomore class going out to the JBS. I remember the day Mr. Teller called me, and he said, "Hey, you mind if we take a whole sophomore class out to the JBS?" And I said, "No," I said, "Yeah, go for it." And we had had some conversations with Tim Reedy, our construction manager, and he was sharing with us how in-demand, you know, some of these folks are that are in the trades, you know, whether it be plumbing, or masonry, or, you know, electrical workers. And so, Mr. Teller picked right up on that, and wanted to make sure all of our sophomores, as you heard tonight, that some of our sophomores who are planning for the JBS, are aware of what is offered and what is available at the JBS, and so many great programs. So I thought that was a very, very nice change this year, and just opening that up to the entire sophomore class, just again, to keep their options. So it'd be interesting to see how it all shakes out in the end, in terms of how many actually go out to the JBS maybe versus years past.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I just happen to be a graduate of JBS, and I taught there for eight years, so awesome, awesome school.
Great. That'll take us right to the JBS. Actually, I was just going to talk about the open house that occurred the last Saturday, Sunday in January. I don't know exactly how many people have been there, because we haven't had a board meeting since then, but it was well-attended, as it usually is. You heard tonight, the first day in, that some of these students at Amherst have went out, and that took their parents back. And that is one of the goals that the JBS has been trying to do over and over and over, is to get the parent in, because we know the parent a lot of times is the decision-maker of whether or not this child will get to attend the JBS or the JBS services. And I think that we've been successful in Amherst doing that. I remember a couple of years ago, we had an Amherst student who wanted to really go there in electricity, because they wanted to be an electrical engineer ultimately. And I received a phone call from the mother, it was adamant, her son was not going to the JBS. He wanted to be an engineer, he should not go to the JBS. And I encouraged her, and made an appointment with her to have a one-on-one tour with the administration there. And the son did go to the JBS, the son did graduate, and I have no idea whether he ever became an electrical engineer or not. But she, afterwards, after he had gone through that program for those two years, she said, "I thank you for making me go do that," because she said, "I didn't realize the education that he would get, and how far advanced he is, even to start college with what he wants to do." So I just think that that speaks volumes, and sometimes those stories are not shared, because there's still a perception that you only go to the JBS if you can't stand or can't make it or make it or anything. That's certainly a false perception. So that would be my report, unless you would have a question for me from that perspective. Is there any other standing reports that needs to come before us this evening? Okay, great. Then we would move on to item number eleven, which would be personnel recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Strangle. A number of personnel items there, most of these are straightforward and self-explanatory. I know the board's had an opportunity to review these over the last several days, and at this time, we'd like to recommend approval of items eleven A through eleven L.
We have a motion, second? Second? Motion is a second for items eleven A through L. Is there any comments or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
We move right on to the educational recommendations?
Yes, we'd like to just highlight item F, which is the approval of program studies. I had an opportunity two or three weeks ago to go through that program of studies after Mr. Teller and his staff completed that and updated that before the scheduling process started at the high school. It's really impressive, going back to Mike's point, just look and see how many course, you know, additional courses we've been able to add over the last several years, in a lot of different content areas. So, again, just a quick feeling, going back to Amy's presentation, that, you know, not only are we operating efficiently, but while we're doing that, we're expanding opportunities for kids. So just a great job by Mr. Teller and his staff of putting that together and figuring out ways to continue to add programs like we've heard about here tonight. We'd like to recommend approval of items twelve A through twelve H.
Could entertain a motion? Twelve A?
Zoom.
Twelve H? Is there any discussion or comments on any of those items? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Is this recommendations this evening?
Yes, three items here. Just wanted a quick background information on a couple of these. Item B would be an item with your approval that are authorized. Mr. Engel is the board president, myself, and Amy as district treasurer, to enter into an agreement with the city of Amherst for the Turn Lane project. Whereas we hopefully have the agreement finalized for this meeting, but we still have some things and some details that we need to work out with that. So we thought that this would be the prudent way to go, because we don't want to wait until, I think, our next meeting is March eighteenth. So rather than lose that five-week timeframe, we thought this would be the way to go and give us an opportunity here over these next several days or next week or two to kind of get those fine details worked out. But obviously, a great, great project that we're looking forward to, and certainly great to be able to work with the city to kind of help with the traffic flow there at the junior high and the new elementary. So I wanted to mention that. And the last item is, of course, the recommendation to implement high school busing effective with the next school year, and that would be providing the same bus service that we're currently providing for students in K eight, which is transportation for those students that live at least one mile from the school. So at this time, we'd like to recommend approval of items thirteen A through thirteen C.
Second?
Hear a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the business recommendations this evening?
I have a quick question, Steve. Is A, just for clarification, A is consistent with what we've done over the last years?
Yes, thank you very much, and I should have mentioned that earlier, but that is an annual item. I want to say for maybe the last four or five years, that essentially what we do is other than, other than the RC fields, once the school year ends, we kind of turn over the scheduling of all those, as you know, we have a number of them. As Chuck knows, we have a number of ball fields. As Chuck knows, we have a number of ball fields that we kind of turn that over to the Amherst staff. So yes, that is a, I want to say four or five years that we've been doing this.
Any other questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
We would take a motion to adjourn to executive session to prepare a protective order against the public employees or will give action about.
So move.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.